Welcome, everyone. Before we begin, we will have a prayer by Councilman Prather followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
They're loving and compassionate God. We thank you. We are thankful for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. Giver of all gifts, we pray your -- we pray for your mercy and love. As this Thanksgiving Day approaches, open our hearts and minds to you. Give us a grace to accept your mercy. We pray for those less fortunate, especially those in need. We pray for the safety of those who are traveling to and from their destinations through this Thanksgiving holiday. We also pray for the armed forces and the public safety individuals who protect us daily, both here and far. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now call to order the Monday, November 19th, 2018 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Graham?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Hussey?
Here.
Kimna?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schreiber?
Present.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Item three, I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. First, we have a recognition for the Jefferson City Museum of Modern Art 2018 High School Art Contest winner, Cora Walsh. So I would like to welcome Cora up to the podium if you'd like to come forward. And we would like to recognize you as the Mayor's Choice Award winner. So, welcome, Cora. We're happy to have you. And for those of you that didn't know, the Jefferson City has a Museum of Modern Art. It's located in the downtown area on the 200 block. It's fascinating. There's beautiful artwork there. But they held a contest of high school art. And you'll see in front of us, we have Cora's beautiful artwork. It's called "All Around the World." So, Cora, you're very talented with your art. What was it that inspired you? Or what was your feelings about this art project?
At first, I kind of wanted to do something with like the Olympics, since the Olympics bring everyone together. And then I thought, let's make it just a gigantic flag that wraps all the way around the world, because, I mean, everyone around the world just needs to come together.
Well, that is a beautiful message. That's so fitting. And I love how you were able to really capture that message with your art. And really, I think you did a fantastic job. So, I -- it would be an honor to have your artwork and display it here at City Hall. So, I had asked if it would be okay if I purchased it from you, and you accepted. So, we will have it here at City Hall. And then also, Mr. Richard Howerton, that owns the Museum of Modern Art, he donated the framing for this. So, it's all framed and will be hanging here at City Hall. So, it'll be an honor to showcase your artwork. And you're welcome to come here once we get it hung on the wall, and you can look at it anytime and bring your family. Do you have some visitors here with you today?
Yeah, my mom and my dad.
Well, welcome. We're glad to have you here. Well, I'd love to get a picture of you with your picture, if that's okay. So, if you want to come forward, and then the council can come up behind me, and we'll get a photo with it.
Do, um, does the family want a picture with him there?
Oh, yeah.
One of them was taking a photo.
Sure.
All right, fantastic. I love being able to display student artwork here at City Hall. So, it's an honor to have that here. Thank you very much. Okay, item B, we have Lieutenant Christopher White from the Salvation Army to present the Red Kettle Campaign. So, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lieutenant Christopher White. I'm the Corps Officer of the Salvation Army. I know many of you well. Before I speak, I'm going to speak a little bit about the Red Kettle Campaign. I'm going to introduce John Sheehan. He's the co-chair, the community chair of this year's campaign. He's just going to say a few things about what the Salvation Army does in our community.
Thank you, Christopher. Thank you, Mayor. Just a moment, your time. I have the good fortune, the privilege of serving as this year's Chair of the Red Kettle Campaign. As I've gotten to know Christopher and Rachel there at the Salvation Army and the great work they do, some quick statistics. They served over 25,000 meals at our local Salvation Army in 2017. Over 400 individuals and families spent the evening with the Salvation Army. During the Christmas season, over 7,500 toys, last year's Christmas season, were distributed to families in our community. It's extraordinary what they do, and it's -- I'm very proud to be a part of it for this year. One thing I did want to note, friends to all of ours, Michael and Bernie Fectle will be raising money for the Salvation Army on Saturday, December 15th, at Hy-Vee, from 8:00 to 9:00. And last year, they did it, and within one hour, they raised $12,000. So, this year, we have the rematch. So, come out, December 15th, Hy-Vee, 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. in the morning, to see Bernie and Michael and their rematch. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan.
I did want to challenge them, and maybe I said, maybe you could raise that amount in 30 minutes this year, but we'll see. The Red Kettle Campaign is really important for the Salvation Army. During the six or seven weeks of the campaign, we raised 25% of our annual operating income for the Salvation Army here in Jefferson City. Two things that I wanted to tell you guys about and tell the wider community about. One, for the first year, we're now able to have people register to ring, to volunteer to ring at the kettles online. We have a new website called registtoring.com. This shows every day, every place, and every time that it's open, and anyone can sign up to be a volunteer bell ringer. Many of you have already done that through service clubs, as individuals, with your families, and we appreciate that very much. Last year, we had just under 700 volunteers, did just under 1,000 hours of bell ringing. That's a lot of people in our community. The second new initiative that we have during this year's campaign, we decided to bring a creative spirit to the campaign, and the result is the art of the red kettle. Four of our iconic red kettles have been painted by artists from around our community. Kiomi Campbell, a member of the Salvation Army. John and Barbara Sheehan, the campaign co-chair and his wife. Roberta Dunkel, who's a noted community artist from Capital Arts. And lastly, Mayor Carrie Turgeon and Sheehas have painted red kettle here. If you would like to show everyone how beautiful it is.
Well, thank you. I'd be happy to. So, this one, I'm calling right now Wet Paint, because it's not quite finished, but it will be.
Don't touch.
So, what this is going to be is the Jefferson City skyline, of course. So, the mayor has to do Jefferson City. It will have the Capitol, the governor's mansion, it will have the downtown streetscape, of course, the mayor's Christmas tree, the Missouri River Bridge, and St. Peter's Church will be shown on this kettle. So, how can someone be so lucky to get one of our four hand-painted kettles?
If you would like the mayor's kettle to hang in your living room, you can simply call the Salvation Army and place a bid for those kettles. You can place an open bid, so we can tell you how much they're going for right now. And they're also on display in four locations. One is just through those doors over there, in the lobby of City Hall. Hawthorne Bank and Central Bank Downtown, and Capital Arts as well. And they'll be hanging there throughout the season. The bids will be displayed on our Facebook page, and people can just simply call us and bid, and they can have that lovely kettle to remind them of the Christmas season all year round. So, we appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about the Red Kettle Campaign. We thank you, Mayor, for taking the time to paint and to contribute towards the campaign. And thank you for what you do to make the Salvation Army successful, so that we can help those most in need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Christopher. And we'll get a picture together.
Yes.
Are there any questions?
Not late.
Don't leave this time. Any questions from council? Councilman Graham?
Madam Mayor, since Councilman Mahalovich is not here tonight, I would like to offer the first bid on his behalf of $500.
Wow! Okay. That's what happens when you have a councilman.
That's great! We'll check it with him. Yep, that's good.
All right. Well, thank you.
Appreciate that, guys.
We'll see if he ups your bid.
He's good for it.
Is he good for it? Okay. Well, with that, let's take a picture with this.
Second bid, anyone? Second bid. Let's sell this thing right now. Half-finished. Okay, you're gonna do.
Yeah, we'll take a picture. Come on.
No, no, take her.
Right.
Carlos is messing it up.
Come on here, man. He's a dog. He's running really, dog.
All right, $500. Way to go, Carlos. All right.
It might even get better tomorrow.
There you go. All right, item C, we would like to recognize the recipient of the 2008 Kevin Meinhardt Award, Mr. Hal Dooley. So, we'd like to welcome -- well, Mrs. Stroke will start, and then we have Hal here in the audience. We'd like to invite him to come forward, and also the Meinhardt family we have as well. So, we'd like to invite all of you forward as we celebrate this special award this evening. We're honored to have all of you here tonight. So, welcome, everyone.
Okay, this evening, I have the privilege of presenting the Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service. Kevin was a dedicated public servant demonstrating his commitment to the community by being actively involved and volunteering his time to various organizations, including the Jefferson City Board of Adjustment from 1997 to 2012. During Kevin's volunteer time, he always represented the highest standards in ethics and professionalism. Because of this, the city has expressed their gratitude by creating the Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service. Any volunteer serving on a city board, committee, or commission is eligible to receive this award, and nominations come from fellow volunteers, staff liaisons, and city council members. The candidate selected displays public service devotion, excellence, and professionalism, outstanding enthusiasm, and reflects the highest ideals of citizenship in their conduct. I'm honored to introduce to you tonight Cindy Meinhardt, the wife of Kevin Meinhardt, and her daughter Molly, and I believe Kevin's brother Bob. And so, they're here this evening to help us in presenting this award to Hal Dooley. Okay, Hal has served on the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board for three years. He's served on the USS Jefferson City Submarine Committee for over five years. He's been on the Veterans Plaza Foundation since 2015, and he's a previous member of the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, I'm actually going to read a portion of the nomination form for Hal Dooley, because there's no other way, really, that I can do it justice. Hal is a lifelong resident of Jefferson City and graduated from Lincoln University. He is known not only for his passion for service in the community, but also for helping to convey the successes and achievements of the community. One such example of his commitment to sharing information about the community and telling the story of Jefferson City is done through his radio show, Open Air Saturday with Hal Dooley, on KWOS News Radio. Hal has shown excellence and professionalism through the city boards and commissions on which he serves, through the various community organizations on which he serves or has served, through his military experience by telling the positive story of Jefferson City through his radio show, and through his personal interactions. Whether serving as a chair of a city board or commission, or as a board member, he always brings a positive professional approach and demeanor to the proceedings of the board or commission on which he is serving. He not only has the technical knowledge to serve on the boards and commissions noted, but he also brings historical knowledge and context to the boards and commissions' decision-making process. Hal focuses on the purpose of the meeting or interview, the connection with the community, and always strives to make his guest or participant appear in a positive manner. Hal strives to include other people in accomplishing the objectives of the various boards and commissions on which he serves. The expectation for all who serve is to get involved in making the city of Jefferson a better place to live, work, and enjoy. As one of the members of the MSP Redevelopment Commission, which identified desired land uses on the retired Missouri State Penitentiary, he periodically encourages city representatives to maintain the integrity of the initial MSP Redevelopment Commission's conceptual vision for the prison property. Aristotle said, "It is not always the same thing to be a good man and a good citizen." In this case, this gentleman strives to be both, a good person and a good citizen. Through his professional experiences, civic involvement, and volunteer work, he has shown that he is both a good person and a good citizen. He truly is interested in making a positive difference in and for the citizens of Jefferson City. He typifies the highest ideals of citizenship by getting involved and passionately working to improve the lives of people, particularly veterans. He is willing to get involved, take action, seek input, offer suggestions, ask questions, see potential and opportunities, advocate for his position, and educate people on issues. Although he is not reluctant to share his views on an issue, he does so respectfully and understands that there may be another perspective regarding the subject being discussed. Hal's citizenship is reflected through his service on numerous city boards and commissions, participation in community organizations, interactions, and commitment to the positive promotion of the city of Jefferson. And believe it or not, this is only a portion of his nomination form. So, there really is so much that could be said for what Hal Dooley does for our community. But it is for these and many other reasons that I ask you to please join me in congratulating this year's recipient, Hal Dooley.
Congratulations, Hal. We are so very proud of you and appreciate your service to our boards and commissions. And we're very honored to have the Meinhardt family here. And it really says a lot that you all are so committed to the continued service of those that volunteer their time and effort on the boards and commissions of our city. So, it really exemplifies the Kevin Meinhardt spirit and award. And so, it's so very nice of you all to be here and continue. It means a lot to us, the council members and mayor, and certainly having a recipient like Hal. Very, very well deserved. One thing that I don't remember if it was in there, but the fact that you also served your great country as a Marine, and appreciate your service as well. So, just all around, can't say enough of how deserving you are of this award. I notice also in the audience, you have your lovely wife, Ann, over here, who's cheering you on. And then we have other members of the boards and commissions that you serve on. Of course, we have Marty from the USS Jefferson City Commission that you serve on, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I see Diane and Cindy and some other -- and Pauline and some others. I hopefully didn't miss anyone else that's on some of your boards and commissions that are here to cheer you on as well. So, would you -- anyone like to say anything? Cindy, Hal, say a few words. Oh, well, thank you. That really means a lot. Your family is very special to us. Well, thank you.
I'd like to thank the Meinhardts. And I only hope that Kevin were here today, that he'd look favorably on my service and the work that I did when I was young. I was told by my family that the core value of any community goes through those who serve their community and give back to the community, and I think that's a strength of what Jefferson City is. And I want to thank the community. I want to thank the Meinhardts at the City Council for this. I'm very humbled to receive this award.
Thank you. Any council comments this evening or questions? Well, we all join in congratulating you, and let me read this special plaque. It reads, "The Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service Presented to Hal Dooley in Grateful Appreciation of Your Volunteer Service to the City of Jefferson 2018." And it has a city coin on here. So, I would like to come forward and present this to you with all the family, and if council would come, I'd love to get a picture with everybody. All right, congratulations again, Hal. Item D, we have the recognition of the November Outstanding Employee Service Award recipient, Mr. Brian Allen. So, we'll have him presented by Steve Cole.
Yes, and I'll have Mr. Allen and Sonny Sanders and Larry, you want to come up, too? Right here, and so, we're here to recognize Brian Allen for Outstanding Service Award for November. An Outstanding Service -- Employee Service Award recognition nomination was submitted for Brian Allen, City of Jefferson Building Inspector, who was selected as a November 2018 recipient of the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award. Some of the information paraphrased from Mr. Allen's nomination includes the following. Mr. Allen provides excellent customer service on a consistent basis. Mr. Allen is always willing to assist others as needed, one example of which was when he volunteered to be certified for lead inspection and provide assistance to the Community Development Block Grant Homeowner Support Program. Because of Mr. Allen's commitment, the CDBG program was able to continue providing services without interruption. Mr. Allen is always professional in his interaction with others, oftentimes taking time to educate contractors or property owners about the purpose and reason for a decision on a particular inspection. Mr. Allen provides excellent customer service by adjusting his inspection schedule to accommodate contractors. Those include early morning inspections, late afternoon inspections, and occasionally inspections on short notice. Mr. Allen is very knowledgeable about the different methods of construction and applying the building code. Besides performing code inspections, he will discuss with contractors various options to construct a structure that complies with the code. He is considered an excellent resource for contractors. Mr. Allen's significant contributions to the overall quality of life of the city are recognized and appreciated. So, congratulations and thanks to Brian Allen, City of Jefferson Building Inspector, for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Service Award for November 2018. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. And you have some family members here?
I do.
Introduce them.
That's my wife Amanda, my two boys, Hunter and Hayden.
All right, so, welcome. Thank you for being here as well.
Welcome. We're so glad to have all of you here, and congratulations on behalf of the city. We really appreciate your outstanding service, because these inspections are so very important. We know what it means to those on the other end that need the inspections, and the fact that you are so outgoing and flexible and really go out of your way to make it convenient. We appreciate that greatly. So, appreciate your outstanding service, and on behalf of the council, we congratulate you, and I'd like to present you a city coin, and we'd like to get a picture with you. So, we'd love for your wife and two boys to come up for the picture, too.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name's Jamie Abbott. I am the Neighborhood Services Manager for I am the Neighborhood Services Manager for the Planning and Protective Services. And tonight I have Lillian Kennard with me with Republic Services. And we're going to provide a little bit of an update for our recycling education program that we first came and spoke to this council back on July 16th. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Lillian. And we're going to kind of just kind of tag team on what we've done over the last five or six months or so.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. So the last time that we were here, just to kind of recap for you, we had updated you on China's ban on imported recyclables. Those bans went from 5% contamination down to 0.3% and a ban on all mixed papers regardless of contamination. While we were here, we spoke about cleaning up the waste stream and that we would be able to, felt we'd be able to help do that by providing recycling information to the residents of Jefferson City. We also discussed empty, clean, dry. This was just putting out there to residents to, you know, a way to help do this is to empty the containers, give them a rinse, and let them dry so they don't contaminate other items inside of it. So to date, the steps that we have taken to educate the public, the City of Jefferson had sent out some recycling education mailers that included a magnet on the back so they could keep these as a quick reference. The city's been kind enough to also share some recycling, Republic Services recycling updates on their Facebook page, as well as we have provided the City of Jefferson with trifles. So they are available in the lobby to residents, as well as, you know, we're going to be using them at events that we may have and also give them out back at our office for new customers that come in. In addition to this, we also recently conducted a recycling waste audit. Through this audit, we were able to determine specific areas that produced higher amounts of contamination levels. So through this, we found these typical things, food contamination, just the mayonnaise left in the jar.
I just want to point out, sorry, Lillian. I just want to point out, these are actual photos from the waste audit that Republic completed over, what was it, a three-day period?
We actually conducted this for every route for an entire week. So for five days, we watched all of these routes dump on the recycling floor and just kind of rummage through it to identify what items in there were commonly seen so we could help provide information on where we need to go and what we need to get rid of. In addition to the food contamination, we found other common items such as glass. There was a lot of glass in multiple loads that came in.
So although glass is a recyclable item, it's just not a recyclable item through the single stream. We have the four locations around Jefferson City, the purple bins, the ripple bins, that accepts the glass, and we recycle the glass that way. Oh, oh my gosh.
We also found a lot of styrofoam throughout this.
Which also includes full noodles. People were recycling full noodles as well as fabric items, including, you know, like chair pads.
Couch cushions, pillows, blankets, clothing items, shoes. We even found a few oil space heaters in there. And I can see where the residents may be going with that. I think that they're on the right path to, you know, trying to recycle. It's just more about educating what is recyclable within this curbside program. So as I was saying, throughout this audit, we were able to indicate some specific areas that had higher levels of contamination. As indicated on these pins, these are the areas that we feel would benefit from even, you know, more education. These pins represent the areas of the route, and we actually, we have separated it out by ward. So you can kind of see your specific areas and what we're looking at here. So from our Monday route, we found the highest levels of contamination were in Ward Four, specifically around the Covington Gardens areas and areas in between South Country Club and Fairgrounds Road. Ward Three is actually a mixture of Monday and Tuesday routes. And Ward Three, we happen to find that this area did not have a noticeable higher amount rate of contamination, so there's no pins there. Ward Two had, has a mixture of some multiple days in here, Tuesdays and Wednesdays routes. Notably, just to, because I know it's hard to see on this map, these are portions of West McCarty, West Main, Hart, Hamlin, Brooks, all the way over to Cliff, along St. Mary's Boulevard and those streets in between down to Missouri Boulevard. Tuesday and Wednesday routes, that's kind of a combination of Wards One, Two, and Five. Some noted areas in here, Buena Vista, Montana, Broadway, East Dunklin, Ashley, Union Street. Again, Wards One, Two, and Five, they are also ran on multiple days, Wednesdays and Fridays. These particular areas that we highlighted, some contamination here is Jefferson, Adams, Hobbs Terrace, Bald Hill. Our Thursday route is primarily around Ward Five. Our highly contaminated areas from these routes on this day were found over Greenberry, Green Meadows, and Payne. And then Friday's route consisted mainly of Ward One. Higher levels of contamination were found around Riverside, Huff, East McCarty, East High, and South Lincoln areas. Jessica, help me out here. So while she gets back to that, the next slide that you're going to see, it's the full map, just to kind of let you see the whole town divided by its wards and see, you know, what areas tend to have, or we are seeing, higher levels of contamination through the route audit that we did. So we feel benefits after doing this. Our next steps, we pinned roughly 2,700 residential homes that we feel could benefit from a further step in education. So our next steps, we are beginning a recycling cart tagging project, starting Monday, November 26th, weather permitting. We will be going around and putting these cart tags on every recycled cart that is sitting out after the route has gone through. The tag on one side of it, it's showing you things that can always go in your curbside single-stream recycling cart. The flip side are things that can never go in your curbside recycling cart, as well as giving you information of a link to find more information at recyclingcypified.com. So following the cart tagging initiative that we have going next week, we're going to let people go through the holidays. I don't think it would be a fair assessment to re-audit these routes during the holiday season because there's going to be a lot of wrapping and things in there. So the week of January 14th, we will conduct another route audit. We'll go over to Federal International and watch our trucks come in and dump on the floor for the whole week and just kind of see if we've gotten improvement, you know, what has helped from the mailers, the social media, the cart tags, and go from there. And once we complete that, we will again update the city on our recycle audit results.
So just as a reminder, I do believe that our Jefferson City's current contamination rate is at approximately 20 to 25%. And so with all the education that we're putting forth, we're really hoping to see that our contamination rate goes down. So in the coming months, in addition to what Lillian just explained, is we will be doing further education through TV ads, radio ads, et cetera, through a grant that we're receiving through Mid-Missouri Solid Waste Management District. So it is our goal to have the contamination rate go down and provide the information to the council members, as some people may be contacting, saying, "Well, you know, I am recycling great," or "I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing. That's a great job. Keep it up." But also, you know, encourage those who may not be recycling as good as they could be, just provide that additional tidbit of information so we can work together in reducing our contamination. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilman Hesse?
Just two quick ones. First off, you mentioned the holidays, so wrapping paper is something that people probably ask about. Is that a recyclable item with you all?
Yes, wrapping paper is a recyclable item. So, and I will be sharing with Jamie in another week or so, we can put out there the Christmas do's and don'ts, naughty and nice list of things that can go in your curbside recycling cart.
And then could you repeat one more time, which ward didn't have any pins dropped on its routes, just for clarity's sake?
Now, that's not to say that contamination was not found in a load from your area. I was just saying that it, you know, there were certain areas that we figured could benefit from some more focus. So while it may not include everybody on that street, we are just going to give it to everybody.
That's a really long way to say Ward Three.
I was going to say, councilman, I believe it's Ward Three. West is best.
Now, see, while the rest of you get the information, you know, tagged on the carts, the next time we re-audit, I may come back and just say Ward Three needs to be tagged.
Councilwoman Ward? When one of your employees comes across a recycling container, that it's obvious that they're using it as a trash container, do they still pick it up? Because my recourse would be to keep driving because it's obvious that they're using it as a trash container.
So while we're doing this education, we are, when I say we, I'm in talks with Republic as to what other steps that could be taken. And that is something that we're talking about as a potential. But the customer service is still there too, for Republic Services. So it's really trying to navigate this recycling, the change in the recycling field and industry. And so that's additional conversations that the city's going to be having with Republic Services as part of the next steps.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. We appreciate you all being here. And empty, clean, dry is something we want to really focus on and remind people, these PR pieces are great. And also, I know this evening, we have a couple other representatives here from Republic. So could we call them forward to the podium as well?
Yes, Jeremy Sparks and Andrew Wimpy. Is that pronounced right?
Yes.
Okay.
So a lot of you, of course, remember Rick Graham. So as we know, he retired. So this is a great opportunity now for us to welcome Andrew and to do some introductions of both of you.
Yeah, so Jeremy Sparks is our operations manager and Andrew is our new general manager.
Well, welcome. Do you want to tell us a little about where, kind of where you came from now that you're here in Jefferson City? You can come to the mic and tell us a little about yourself.
Yeah, sure. So I spent eight years in the military. I was a Blackhawk helicopter pilot. And then I went to grad school and then came here, started working for Republic in Kansas City, and then came to Jeff City just two months ago. So I'm new. I'm from South Dakota originally and very happy to be here and be a part of a great team as well.
We're very happy to have you here. Welcome to Jefferson City.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Glad to have you here, Jeremy, as well. Well, anything else to add? If not, I'd like to take a picture with our, with council because, for one, my ward was the most contaminated, so I'm going to be talking to my neighbors.
Speak to your councilman first.
Talk to my councilman about that.
Oh, no, this is all you.
So Mrs. Donaldson, please.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 2.08 acres of land addressed as 105 JC Drive from M2 General Industrial and RS3 Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First to orient you to the location of this request. Up on the screen is a location map of the area. Toward the left-hand side of the screen is the intersection of Highway 179 and Truman Boulevard, Industrial Drive. The Gerbs Grocery Store is located right there. So the property is highlighted in the center of the screen. It's located just a couple hundred feet north of Industrial Drive on JC Drive. The property also has frontage on West Main Street. The property is currently zoned, has two different zoning districts on it. One is an M2, a general industrial zoning category, and the other is a RS2, a single-family residential zoning district for the portion of the property that fronts on West Main Street. This council bill would rezone the property from its current M2 and RS2 categories to a C1, a neighborhood commercial zoning district. The stated purpose for the rezoning request is to reuse the site as a, redevelop it basically as an indoor sports practice facility, which is a permitted use of the C1 zoning district, but would not be permitted with the current zoning districts that are on the property. This item was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their October 11th meeting on a vote of eight to zero. I will point out one item, that a C1 zoning would be the only commercial zoning in this area, but that there's something that needs to be pointed out here, and that is the city's comprehensive plan, the development plan map of that document, which lays out the intended land use across the city, actually identifies much of this frontage along West Main Street, currently zoned industrial, as being intended for commercial use. Basically, what I mean is that there's certain areas on West Main Street that would probably benefit from a rezoning, perhaps a staff-initiated one in the future. So the next slide I was going to show was the, an excerpt of that development plan map showing that this request does conform with the comprehensive plan, which shows this property is being intended for commercial use. The reason, and that much of the area to the west of the property there on West Main Street also falls in that category, so it would not necessarily be viewed by staff as a spot zoning situation or anything in that order, that there is a plan for commercial activity along that corridor. With that, the applicant's representative is here to answer any questions. And I'd also be happy to answer any questions prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Okay, this time I'll open the public hearing for Bill 201865. Is there anyone who would like to come speak? Thank you. If you could just give us your name, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Patrick Kramer, Central Missouri Professional Services, 2500 East McCarty Street. I'm here tonight representing Kurt Hal, Mark Gerlock, Joe Lopez, the prospective buyers and developers of the property. We have one owner represented with me in the audience. The JC Drive and Industrial Drive area is currently a mix of industrial and commercial and office uses. Previously, the existing site and surrounding area was utilized as a warehouse and distribution center for roofing materials and gas and oil distribution facility, which date back to the 1950s and 1960s. Our previous plan presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission indicated that the existing building would be removed from the site and a new facility would be constructed. Currently, since we are in the schematic design phase and due to the cost considerations for the for the developer, a decision was made to change the course and redevelop the existing buildings. The existing buildings would be remodeled and include exterior updates and modifications. The redevelopment plan would be a community activity building with the intentions to provide a space for a year-round sports practice facility. The facility has plans for eight batting cages, a volleyball court, a junior high basketball court, and amenities to include locker rooms, childcare, concessions, multipurpose space, and viewing areas. There are also other plans to include a possible exercise studio, a yoga studio, and healthy food vendor. We believe the C1 zoning classification and the use would be a good buffer to the residential properties to the east and in less intensive use in this area. Site plan details are limited at this time because of the stage of development we're in, but public and community facilities are all available and adequate for the redevelopment. All code requirements will be addressed within the site plan review process to include parking, stormwater, water quality, lighting, sidewalks, and buffering, and at this time, we don't believe a traffic impact study is anticipated with the development. So in closing, we feel this is an exciting project for the city. There are limited facilities of this nature in the City of Jefferson, and therefore, we believe this project will serve an unfilled need for the community. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on Bill 201865? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and take up the bill. Is there any council questions or deliberation? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item B.
Resolution 201822, a resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a special exception permit to operate a short-term rental for property addressed as 500 East Miller Street.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First to orient you to the location of this request. Up on screen is a location map. City Hall is actually located just to the center, at the top of the screen, located right there in the City Hall campus. So we're literally just a block and a half or two away from City Hall, where the property is located on the corner of Miller Street and Jackson Street. Property is currently an RA2, which is a multifamily residential zoning district. This resolution would approve use of the property as a short-term rental. Short-term rentals are identified as a special exception use in the residential zoning districts, meaning that they require the permit, which goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission review process, and then with final approval by the city council in the form of a resolution. Within the zoning code, there are also specific use standards outlining the manner in which a short-term rental must be conducted, so specific rules contained within the zoning code to ensure that the impact of a short-term rental is mitigated, especially in the residential I do have an aerial photo of the property as well. The application does meet the requirements for a short-term rental. This item was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of October 11th and was recommended for approval on a vote of 8 to 0. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we will open the public hearing for RS 201822. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this item? Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Aaron Clark. I am the owner of 500 East Miller Street. My family and I did live there for a short time. Reason why we wanted to open this venture is to share the history of Jefferson City with everybody else, especially the people that come from out of town. The house was built in 1910. A lot of historical history that we just want people to be a part of. A great view of the Capitol as well.
And I believe that it earned a Golden Hammer recognition this summer. Is that right, Councilwoman Ward?
Yes, it did. Your mother actually came to the ceremony, so...
Yes, she did. I couldn't be there, so she came for me.
Yes.
So I heard it was fantastic.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this resolution? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and entertain a motion to take up Resolution 201822.
Move.
Any further discussion or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Congratulations. Item 6, appointments by the mayor. Item A, Mrs. Strope will outline the following appointees.
Thank you, Mayor. The recommendations are two recommendations to the Environmental Quality Commission, Hannah Kito and Ashley Keely; to the Housing Authority Board, Dennis Mueller; and to the Police Personnel Board, Pete Fleishman.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 7, we have no presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. Item 8, announcements by the mayor. I did want to announce Mr. Jonathan Jackson. I don't know if he's coming back in, but I noticed he was here earlier this evening, and he currently works for Council for Drug Free Youth. You might remember him as our very first-ever council liaison, so glad that he was here this evening. And my announcements, I'll start with. We had a full week with Veterans Day activities. There were some great events happening here in the City of Jefferson to recognize our veterans. Also, had a deployment from the National Guard this week. Very emotional time for the families and the seven members that were deployed to Kuwait, and we wish them the best of luck on their nine-month deployment, appreciate their service to our country. And many of you probably saw Series come down off of the Capitol, so the state of Missouri had a great documentation of that. You can watch it live, and they're still documenting that whole process of Series. You can also follow Series on Twitter if you don't already. I highly recommend. And then a few events coming up. So if you want to nominate anyone else, Carlos, I am doing the Special Olympics Polar Plunge again this year, the second annual. You all have one at your place there. So for $500, you get the special opportunity to run through the hazmat sprinkler on High Street at Madison and High on Wednesday, December 5th at 4:30 PM, or you could maybe nominate somebody, Carlos, or anybody else, if you want to pay $500 for someone else to run through the hazmat sprinklers. So I did it last year, along with Chief Schofield.
It was exhilarating.
So I take that as a yes, you'll do it again? Silence over there. I think we need to nominate you again. And Randy Warner from Police Department, we also had our very own, and he's not here, but Councilman Rick Mahalovich ran through the sprinklers last year, so now that it's on air, yes?
Madam Mayor, I think he needs to run through it again for five, for five more hundred dollars.
For five more hundred dollars, okay.
He's at a thousand right now, so...
There you go.
I nominate Rick.
He'll never miss a meeting again after this.
Nope.
But all of the money we raise goes to the Special Olympic athletes, so we really want to do this again. We had about 12 of us that did it last year, and we really want to top that this year and appreciate it. And I know we have some of you in the audience that actually donated to it last year, and appreciate the stories and your contribution. You were very nice to donate last year to that special event. It really is wonderful for our Special Olympic athletes, so we don't mind running through the sprinklers for something that's special, so we appreciate it. So again, Wednesday, December 5th at 4:30, and any other council members that might be interested, I'm looking at all nine of you right now. If anybody else wants to do that with me, I would greatly appreciate it. So you can donate online at thesomo.org, and each plunger will have their own website, or certainly call me. I wasn't going to mention his name, but Sheriff John Wheeler is the other co-chair, so it's a city-county thing, so we have a kind of a friendly rivalry going on, trying to see who can get the most people and raise the most money for Special Olympics. So appreciate those efforts. Couple other dates, we have the mayor's Christmas tree lighting on Thursday, November 29th, 29th, that's right, and then the next day, that next day, Friday, is the Living Windows, and then Saturday is the Christmas parade that Councilwoman Wiseman, as a JC, is working on. So yes, Thursday, the 29th, is the 13th annual. So those are three big things coming up. Any other announcements of council this evening? Councilman Fitzwater?
Not really an announcement, just a thank you. Councilman Graham and I hosted a get-together from some folks in the 4th Ward on Saturday to talk about Sherman's Hollow issue. I just wanted to publicly thank Sonny and Mr. Barron. Mr. Barron did an incredible job of explaining the project to the members that came, I guess for about 25 or so, and also feeling a barrage of questions. I just wanted to publicly thank them for being with us, working with us, and I think taking some of the fears of some of the folks away on the project, so thank you.
Well, communication is key in getting directly with the ward residents, so thank you all for hosting.
I just want to echo those same words, and like I said, special thanks to staff for coming out on a Saturday, which they did not have to, but certainly Sonny and Eric, truly thank you so very much for that.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. Item 9, Lincoln University Student Representative update, Ms. Wanjaro.
Um, nothing much is happening in our next several weeks, but we have Thanksgiving break. Classes are done for the rest of the week. Today, we only had classes today, and we will resume back on Monday. However, the university is open until Wednesday. Now we are...
And I did hear that they won their basketball game, the men's basketball.
Yes, they did.
Congratulations.
They played Missouri S&amp;T, the men did today, in Kansas City, and I think the women are 3-0, so they play Wednesday night, 7 o'clock.
Fantastic, that's great. Thank you, Carolyn. Item 10, presentations from the gallery. Okay, we have Mr. Ed Story here to speak this evening. Welcome.
I need to start off by, I called last Monday, am I on three minutes or five minutes?
Uh, five, actually it's five.
Five, good, but I can't get done in three, what I have to do. Okay, I'm here as a spokesman for a group of people who are really knowledgeable about and concerned about children and teenagers in Cole County. We have children coming through Judge Beadham's court, abused and neglected children reaching at record levels. To my knowledge, we've hit the last four years, every year we have more of these children coming through. And the thing is, we have hundreds of them that we cannot give proper service to, they're just not getting it. And I'll get into those numbers a little bit later on. We have teenagers with behavior issues. We have, in the public school system, we have 2,400 students, with over 50% of them using drugs of one kind or another. 50%. That came from Joy Sweeney, who's a head of the Council for Drug Free Youth in Cole County. Now, several weeks ago, I ran into a member of the Sheriff's Department, and I told him what we were doing, and I told him about the 50% thing, and I know Sonny got the 50% out of my mouth, and he said, "It's more than that." So we're talking about something that's really, really serious here. We have organizations and groups in Jeff City that do everything they can to help these children that have these problems and these teenagers, but they're limited in what they can do because they don't have the money. So we're talking about money. In other words, we're at a point right now where these neglected children that are coming through, we can't service them. They have mental health problems is the big, big deal on them, and we can't, and these children that, and this deal on drugs is not going up slowly, it's going up rapidly. So we got to do something. Where can we get money? Where can we get, we're talking about a lot of money, to get outside help to come in and help us with these problems. They are available out there, and I'll get into that a little bit later. So once again, where can we get this money? There is a place to get this money, and it's called the Community Children's Services Fund, and it's something that you can get in the state of Missouri. We have 10 counties now that have it, and the latest county to get it was Boonville County, right up, right up the road here. And I went, that's where I got all of my information, and they were so helpful. I could have not even been at the point to do what I'm doing here today if it had not We got, okay, we've handed out things. All the white stuff is just for you to look at later. I need for you to go to the red deal. Where's the red? Well, there it is. Okay, I'd like to go through this because this is very, very important. This is our calling card. We are going to start a petition drive to go out as citizens and get enough on a petition drive in order to get this on the ballot. So if you would, everybody, if you wouldn't mind, open up the first page, and we talk about the proposition to establish this in Cole County. This fund will be generated by a one-quarter cent sales tax. A one-quarter cent increase is only one penny for every $4 spent, and will raise approximately $2.4 million every year from now on out. Now, the $2 million that I got was from Larry Vincent, so that's, that's, he said that last year it was $2.4, and the year before, that, $2.6, but he said he didn't know the difference, but that's what it was. So that's a lot of money. This is the kind of money that we need to do this, because to get these services, it's gonna, it's gonna take a lot of money. So let's go down and go to the yellow part, okay? The yellow part, with this Proposition 1 that we're trying to get through and getting these funds, this is, these are the things that we can get. And we're doing all of this now, but we're not doing enough of it because we don't have the money to hire the people and the expertise to come in here and do it.
I know the five minutes has passed, so if you want to wrap it up, that would be great.
All right, okay, this is really important, this next one. Got to go on the back page, very back page. Okay, 26% of the youth in Cole County reported that they were very sad, and often or always, that mean they just didn't think that things were going that way, and they just didn't feel like they had much worth. Now, this is an official report, and it comes from the Missouri Student Survey, and they're located right here in Jeff City. So we're not just picking these figures out of the air, these are things that we can back up. Okay, the second one is 15.2% Cole County youth have considered suicide. That's 15 out of every 100 kids, and it's, this was certified by the exact same party that did this first part here. That alone, to me, would seem like we need to get this money, if it's available, we need to get it. And something about that money is that getting it every year, you don't get results the first year, you start getting some the second year, and then the third, and the fourth, and the fifth, and sixth, then it really starts to really develop into something. And I'll... And I'll tell you something else it does, it starts paying off for Cole County because it's gonna lower the expenses that Cole County is having to put out now for drug abuse, for youth crime, for imprisonment, and some other things, I can't think of the other one right offhand. Okay, now the next one, 1 in 5 children with mental illness actually, actually receive needed services. Just 1 out of 5? Well, that's what the survey said. If it were just 3 out of 5, that wouldn't be good enough, but it's 1 out of 5. And once again, it takes money to do this, and these organizations in town, all of them, Boys and Girls Club, and, and Big Brothers and Big Sisters, and CASA, and Special Learning Center, they're doing all they can, but they don't have money to go any further.
Well, Mr. Story, why don't I, since we've gone through the, the presentation, why don't I ask, does council have any, any questions?
Can I, just one more, one more important one, no, can I?
Okay.
No, yes, no? Okay. Cole County has been federally designated as a healthcare professional shortage area for mental health, which translates to a lack of access to needed services. What it translates is to a lack of needed money.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and it looks like there is a phone number.
We're gonna get this done.
Okay, there's a phone number on the back, so certainly if council has any questions, it looks like your contact information is on there, so, okay. Does council have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Story. Let's see here, no one else signed up under that item? Item 11, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bill's introduced 2018-72.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $333,844 and 8 cents land lease agreement with Fisher Grain Farms for city-owned property.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, as the clerk mentioned, this is a bill that would authorize a land lease agreement with Fisher Grain Farms that conducts agricultural work around our sewer treatment plant and airport, all city-owned properties. This is a continue, Fisher Grain Farms has been farming this ground for a number of years, very familiar with our operation and the use of our crop rotations that were established to maximize the use of our sludge application system, and this also, this also would maximize the amount of money going to our airport, which would therefore reduce the GR subsidy as much as possible. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. 2018-73.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, establishing election dates in the city of Jefferson, Missouri for the 2019 general municipal election.
Mr. Mullman?
Yes, this ordinance establishes the applicable dates, filing dates, and closing candidate, closing dates for the 2019 general municipal election in April of next year.
Any questions? Okay. 2018-74.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $500,614 and 26 cents agreement with MERA excavating LLC for the sanitary sewer replacement various locations project.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, as the clerk mentioned, this is a contract to do sewer repair work on various locations around town of failing sewers that have been identified through our wastewater division. The project would be funded completely with wastewater funds. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. 2018-75.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2017-2018 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the workers' compensation fund.
Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a $50,000 supplemental request to cover workers' comp-related medical claims and services for fiscal year 2018.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks. 2018-76.
An ordinance amending the 2018-2019 budget by reclassifying one administrative technician to Neighborhood Services Specialist 1 within the Department of Planning and Protective Services.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk stated, this is a reclassification of a position that was created out of two halftime FTEs back in 2017, is currently vacant since this summer. The responsibilities include working on program delivery for the Community Development Block Grant Program, which actually would fund half of this position, also the neighborhood, the city-funded Neighborhood Reinvestment Act, also provide in-house support to the property inspectors who will be starting to use field software, so they'll be out in the field more, and will need someone to help support them inside City Hall. This person will also help support the Stork Preservation Commission, other boards, and the recycling program, household hazardous waste. The financial impact, since the position is vacant, would range between $3,600 and about a little less than $5,000 in potential salary differences between the two ranges. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, 2018-77.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Anderson Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $187,200 for the pavement management analysis and asset management inventory project.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, this is a contract, a consultant contract with Anderson Engineering to do services involving our pavement management system. The pavement management system ultimately would allow us to compare our pavements, street pavements, from one to the other to identify the highest and best need for use of funds for our street overlay program. The project would be funded completely with half-cent sales tax money from that overlay, from those portions laid out for the overlay. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Bill's pending, we've taken up 65. 2018-66.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $22,000 agreement with Rave Mobility for the purchase of Rave Mobility and a 50% caution share with Cole County.
Chief Schrader, along with Captain Heisler and Lieutenant Steiferman.
Thank you. As you've heard me say several times, we have for many years worked and reached various stages of wanting or bringing before the council a mass notification system. We've reached that point where you now have one, it's Rave Mobility. We followed the process, engaged people from Cole County and various departments in that process. We believe this is a very effective type of mass notification system for a variety of reasons. The cost is $22,000. This authorizes the purchase of that system, and then, which also includes maintenance and support for one year. The monies would come from sales tax G, and Captain Heisler and Lieutenant Steiferman have been more directly involved in that process, and they're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yeah, thank you. I'm absolutely, I, for, I want to talk about some, this bill a little bit, and I just wanted to let council know that I am absolutely against this bill. The, I looked over the weekend and found out that the Facebook page for JCPD has 8,500 likes, the Twitter, or Cole County Sheriff's Department has 4,100 likes, and Twitter for JCPD has 2,500 followers. These could be utilized by JCPD in Cole County, but they're not being utilized by Cole County. They could be getting messages out, and before the algorithm, algorithm change, Facebook would have been a really great way to get messages out. I don't think this is a good use of public funds. I think that instead, we need to spend this on something else, more stormwater issues, many other pressing issues within the city. I think that there are already a lot of other notification systems that we're utilizing, including getting information out to the media, and, and I just don't think this is a good use of funds.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. My main concern is potential uses of the data that is harvested from residents who would sign up for the, for the service. You know, we were told last time that the data would be held by the company that's providing the service. My understanding is that there are no protections or limitations within the contract that the city would have with the company regarding any further use, that, any other lucrative use that the company could, could have of the data. I mean, extremely personal information, private stuff that folks are sharing for one use, but that really has no safeguard to any, any other potential use. I, I don't potentially, I don't specifically have an issue with the service that's being provided, but I sure wish that this agreement had, had built in some of those protections for the residents who might, who might want to utilize the service. So that's, that's my main concern with this bill.
Would Chief Schrader or any like to answer some of those concerns?
Well, I think the, the standards, what was presented to all the companies that were, you know, we solicited and in fact submitted, prices, costs are similar, and I think maybe we're not doing a good job of being very explicit in the parameters and the protective devices and those types of things, so maybe you can address those.
And I think the biggest, the biggest thing is it's an opt-in system that this, that rave notification has, or, so those individuals can put whatever information they feel comfortable in putting into the system, so that we can utilize it for, I guess, natural disasters if anything happened. Most of the other counties and stuff, the surrounding counties that I've spoken with, they're, they utilize it more for major events rather than utilizing it for more watered-down things, if a, if a street's gonna be closed or, or something of that sort. They don't utilize it for that, it's only for the, for major instances that go on. I know the university may use a system, Lincoln University, or, sorry, MU utilizes a system from rave also, but in looking at all the different vendors and things, this one seemed to have the most, that was more appealing to the committee that, that actually chose rave itself, due to the different aspects, and having them being utilized in Callaway, Osage, Boone, Montgomery, Johnson County, MU, and all the, basically the surrounding area, to where we can actually sign up to be a member of their group, they can be a member of ours, so that in the event there is a weather emergency or something of that sort, we will get notifications from them also if we choose to opt in to their, to their network.
Okay, and I know there was the concern about the social media, the benefit of that versus this system, so maybe you could share some of the differences, or?
This would be similar to if an Amber Alert would go out. If you have that signed in on your phone, you will immediately get the alert. Facebook, Twitter, and things like that, I guess you could set up for notifications to be notified of those, but.
Councilman Wiseman, I get where you're coming from, when we, we do have several social media platforms, and the problem is we had one PIO, and that PIO's responsibility was to try to populate all three social media platforms. With rave 911, what that will allow us to do is him populate one, and in the background of wave, rave, it will format that post for each of the individual social media platforms. They don't have to go to each individual platform, sign in, make a post, sign into the next one, copy and paste the post over. This is a one-stop, they put it out on rave, and it will go out and populate all of our social media platforms with one click of a button. So it'll be more, it'll be more efficient in utilizing our social media platforms as well.
And people wouldn't necessarily need to have, I mean, not everybody, let's say, has, you know, the social media, Facebook, or Twitter, so they wouldn't, for those that don't have it, they'd be able to use their cellphone.
My issue also with that is, is that everything is going out to the media, and so people are getting alerts from their KRCG apps. It's not just Twitter, and it's not just Facebook. Yes, you can have every, every tweet, tweet directly sent to your phone if you enable Twitter direct, or correctly, and you, and, and you could go out and you can have, you can, you can have a marketing campaign to get people to do that. And so I just don't, I just don't think that we're gonna end up having a successful marketing campaign to get people to sign up for this, to opt in, when we can't even get people to sign up for our Facebook page, and can't get people to sign up for our Twitter pages. And so I, I just, I, I think copying and pasting isn't that hard, and I, and I, I think that they can go ahead and get those out on those current social media pages.
And I know we had Fitzwater and then Hensley.
Yeah, my question is just in regard to what has been the uptake in those other communities of folks that have opted into their systems? Do you know what their percentages are?
From what I understood, I contacted, I think it was Osage County, and I don't know the specific numbers, but in, in speaking with Andy Rice there with their 911 center, she said they've had very, it's, it's worked out very well for them. We have utilized, we're actually opted in to Boone counties because we, our 911 centers are kind of co-mingled a little bit in the event of an outage, and we have received the notifications from Boone on several different occasions when the, you know, a 911 line goes down, or somebody hits a telephone pole, or different things where there's an outage, and we've received the notifications personally, both Chad and I have, from Boone, and it works out pretty, pretty good. And just getting the notification out as quickly as possible, because that doesn't rely on a public information officer to put that information out, it could be an op, whomever we choose, it could be a, one of the communications operators could put information out if there's something specific, a closure or something, something major that's going on. Whomever we choose to have the administrative rights to be able to post stuff, we can put the stuff out.
Thank you. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. And thanks for the additional explanation. Just on, on the data security piece one more time, my, the concern there is completely separate from what I think is the validity of the service that's being provided. Certainly, it's a, it's a compelling reason for someone to sign up, to have this information at maybe the most hectic time or most dangerous time. But by us, by this council agreeing to this contract and having this service provided and offered, you know, it's, I view it, and I think a lot of residents would view it as, as our blessing of the entire operation. And I think the assumption, I, you know, I recognize that you only put in the information that, that you're willing to share, but I think that, I think that comes with the assumption that only good things will be done with it. And I don't have a particular reason to doubt this specific company, I just know that in other instances where there is an, an open-ended potential use to data, aside from, again, the, the valid use under the contract, I think people would be surprised if down the road they found out that, you know, data was being used for, for some reason that they had not intended. And again, I would really prefer that, and I know this is not for you guys, if, if there was, you know, some protection in the contract for this, a single line, you know, but I, I think without that line, it's, it's a, it's a great big hole, and, and I wish that weren't the case. But thank you very much.
For the misuse by the, by rave mobility?
Down, yeah.
Okay.
Not, 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 not by you, not, not by you all, because, because they're the ones who hold the, they're the ones who hold the data. So that's my overarching concern there, but again, thank you very much.
And I, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Graham?
Councilman Hensley, I understand your concern, however, that's pretty much anything that you sign up for, when you go buy a cellphone, and you sign all that paperwork, you're putting your stuff out there at that point. So, this is something I do support, and thank you to Jeff City Police Department for bringing this to the council's attention. How much is too much to save a life? And I think $22,000 we're putting into this for the residents of Jefferson City, I don't think that's too much money. Lincoln University is about to enter into an agreement with Rave Guardian, which is pretty much the same as rave, has an extra component to it. I know that State Technical College has rave, along with the, with Lean, so I do support this, and I do urge my colleagues to vote yes on this tonight.
Councilman Hessie?
I think the point that Councilman Hensley's getting at, it's, it's, you share information. My, my envision is rave sells this to a home security company down the line who targets these individuals for sales of home security. I mean, that's, that's the kind of concern you're talking about, of they sell that list and profit off the information that's been shared. At least, that's, that's where my mind goes. I guess this is a contract, are we locked into the five years, or is this a renewable? We do this for a year, we don't like it, and we back out?
I believe it was renewed.
I believe it was renewable yearly for five years at that price.
Yeah, I know it was five. I'm just, I'm just kind of curious if you guys get 12 months, 18 months into this and don't like it, if it's not. I guess my follow-up would be how do we measure success for this service from your all then? If it's a year from now, we're looking to renew and you're making the case for renewing it, what's the case you make to us? What, what does success look like?
They hope you don't have to use it.
Yeah, that'd be the idea.
But I mean, it's an opt-in service, so if we need people to opt in, I guess I would really, universities are not a good example comparison because they've got all that data. So like Mizzou, they're probably just, if you're a student there and they got your cellphone, they're just probably sticking you on the service.
And they'll get opt-in to it.
You still have to opt in? But they've got, but they have the ability to connect, like they've got emails, they can email the student body and say, here's the service. We don't have that for Jefferson City, right? I mean, there's no way to communicate to everybody to say, here's this new service, here's the link. So I guess, like, what's, what's our game plan to get people to sign up for this? Because one measure of success is to say, this many thousands of people signed up for the service.
And part of the contract is with rave mobility to assist us in the marketing of it, to give us different tools to try to market this also to the community.
And then secondly, do we have, like, do we have internal procedures worked out for what gets a rave notification and what doesn't? I mean, you talked about you wouldn't use it for a street closing, it'd be a weather event, but do we at least have parameters so that, you know, it's not a snap decision on the fly, but we know if it falls in the bucket?
And that would be something that we would have established with, really, I didn't want to put the cart before the horse and have all of the SOPs in place prior to the approval of this. I have spoken with Boone County at length, along with Osage County, and they have a lot of life lessons they learned upon their implementation of this. So before we would do anything, setting up our SOPs, we would probably contact them and so as to not reinvent the wheel and learn from their mistakes that they had already made so that we don't fall into that same hole.
And I guess there's a couple of ways to show value in a year from now. I mean, there's the side to say you hope you don't have to use it, but the flip side says if you find ways to use it, that's also of value. So I guess I would be encouraging of, you don't want it to be the app that cried wolf too often that people tune it out. But at the same time, my hope would be that if people signed up for this service, that maybe we are communicating some way, shape, or form through it to alert them of non-emergency things that impact the entire community so that somebody doesn't forget about it and thinks that it's broken or doesn't get used. I mean, I know universities use it for a number of different reasons, sometimes events on campus that require it, emergency of nature, but also just, I hate to say, like, public announcements to say that the heat is off in a building or, you know, or water main broke, campus closed, building closed type thing. And so I would just be encouraging to make sure that if we're going to invest resources, that we find some mechanism to actually use this thing, not just always in an emergency function.
And we are focusing on the public alert system of this as well, but it's, this is a two-pronged program for us. Because with rave 911, what we will also be doing is all the officers in the police department, they will set up an account and would submit something just as minimal as their phone number in the account. But by doing that, we're going to be able to utilize this to call out our detectives, call out our SWAT team, our negotiators, our traffic unit for a fatality crash. Right now, those procedures, just like the old, we all used to carry pagers with us. Now we've kind of gone, you know, got rid of the pagers and we all just carry our cellphones with us. But that relies on somebody to be able to call out and reach us. And so on these, on these major incidents right now, we'll send out a notification to everybody. And to get a notification that you're responding in, we give them a, call the SWAT team commander. So he's getting, well, he's trying to plan this mission. He's getting, you know, 20 text messages coming in saying, I'm coming, I'm not coming, I'm going to be late. And with rave mobility, what we'll be able to do is when they get that text or phone call, they just simply respond to it with a one or a two. And he immediately gets a count of how many SWAT guys are coming, how many are not coming, our negotiators or traffics. We've got ways beside the public notification system that we have outlined how we would like to use this software as well.
So just to follow up on that, because I look at the pricing breakdown, the rave alert's like 5,000 a year. That's, that's the more public interface of this, right? The rave alert system? That, that's my alert, that's, and then the 911 suite, I know there's a way to sign up and it connects, and if I call 911, there's those features, but that's, what you just described is contained within that 911 smart suite?
The rave alert is the notifications that go out to the devices. The smart 911, the additional component, is where, that's what connects to our PSAP, our 911 equipment downstairs. So if your cellphone number registers on a 911 call and you have a rave account, the communications operators will automatically see your account information that you've entered.
But just the example you used of you sending it out to the detectives and the police department and notifying them, that situation, is that a feature of the smart 911 suite?
That's the alert suite.
That's the alert suite?
Yes.
So that's, I guess what I'm breaking down, is this a $5,000 public alert system and really a $15,000 a year internal, you know, improving police operations? I'm not, I'm not looking to dig here and I'm not questioning, I'm just saying that like, because if they're two parts, part of it's you guys are doing something for 15 grand a year to improve how you function as a department, to improve public service and keep us safer.
I think in just looking at the product as a whole, we just decided that that would be another perk of the system as a whole. The 911 suite would give us a lot more information as to history at your residents. People can enter if they have animals, they could, if they would like to put their garage code in if we happen to get to the house and we're unable to get in. It would populate that at our communication center in the event that you have called.
Yeah, no, I guess I'm selling it here to say, really, what people are thinking about is the public alert system, the text on my phone that pushes to me, that's really a $5,000 product. The $20,000 is what's buying like the full package, which is an internal thing. I think that like the headline of the city council spent $22,000 on a text notification system to alert you when there's a tornado blaring through or something like that. Really, we're spending $5,000 a year for that particular service. We've just chosen to also add this other product that's going to do all of these other things with 911.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Hensley?
And not to re-beat a seemingly boring horse, but to respond to Councilman Graham's comments a few speakers ago. You know, this isn't a situation where on my own volition, I'm going to purchase a product from a store. It's a public entity contracting with a private business to harvest data from private individuals. And while, while it hasn't happened here, I have been involved in a number of contracting projects on behalf of public entities where private entities are brought in to collect data from private individuals. And there is always language about permitted uses and data protection included in those contracts. And it's almost always provided by the vendor. Like, they propose it and it's usually ironclad. And if it's not ironclad to begin with, it becomes ironclad before we assign it. So, you know, look, we're all, we all have massive digital footprints and we all probably have more information about us out there than, than we should. But in this particular case, we are potentially executing a contract that has no backend protection for the data that our neighbors will be providing to this company. And I for one think it would be an extremely easy contracting fix. And if the company hesitates to agree to such a contracting fix, that would raise even more suspicions in my mind. But it's, this is a specific contracting issue I have. I don't, I don't have a, the dollar amount is not an issue for me. The service that's provided is not an issue for me. But this big glaring contracting hole would keep me up at night if I voted in favor of this.
Mr. Mollman, based on those comments, what are your, what's your direction or suggestion?
Well, if, if the council wanted to pull this off, I'd be happy to reach out to rave mobility and see if we can work out some mutually agreeable contract language to address Mr. Hensley's concerns.
Councilman Graham?
Councilman Hensley, what do you think Facebook is doing to your information? Holding on to it?
They're not doing anything that this city is making us, is exposing us to.
But when you, when you sign up for Facebook, what do you think they're doing to your information? Is holding on to it?
Totally different situation.
Okay. I totally disagree.
Well, you know what? The residents of this city are not participating in Facebook because we signed them up for it.
But if you want the residents of Jeff City to sign up for Facebook to get notification from Jeff City Police Department, Twitter, and those things I mentioned earlier, you're doing the same thing.
It sounds like people are already signed up for it.
Not everybody's on Facebook, sir.
I'm not asking them to. And we're not contracting with Facebook.
So on this particular item, Mr. Mollman, I mean, if, if this was placed on the informal, you could come back to us at the next meeting with an update on, on that item or how, how they typically would have that in the contract or what our, what we would, what our expectations are. Because certainly, this company is not out there actively harvesting the information and selling it, but whatever needs to be in the contract or just so the expectations are known, I guess, of those that sign up, I guess so they know. Because it is an opt-in, so it's completely opt-in. There's nothing that would make people sign up for it. It's only on their own will, but at least they know what the expectations are.
Yeah, I mean, if it's the desire to counsel, I'd get on the phone first thing tomorrow morning and we'd figure it out. And, you know, I, that's to cover it. No. It's, it's, if that's the direction provided by the council, I would contact with rave, talk with them, figure out what, you know, what they would be comfortable with, what the city could live with, and bring it back. I mean, it's just, it's just a contract negotiation like any other term. I suspect that this is not the first time the issue has been raised with them. So I, if I raised it with rave, I would expect that they would have an answer for us. So it's just another contract negotiation exercise and then I'd be happy to undertake that for the council if that's their desire.
Okay. We'll see what, what direction we get from council. And just on the product itself, I'm glad to see that we are to the point that we've, that you all and your committee has narrowed it down to this item, that you feel very confident in, in the product. I know it's something that honestly, I don't remember a time that we didn't talk about emergency notifications. It's been years really of this discussion of how can we notify the public on their phones, on their cellphones, years. And now the technology is here, but looking at between the budget and technology and now finding something that really is a benefit and not only to those getting the, the emergency notifications, but being able to, you know, upon their own will and desire, providing information that would be helpful and life-saving to them in their own emergency, whether it's a health issue or whatever unfortunate emergency could occur that at least the police department would be notified as well. So it really seems to have a lot of benefits. And I know Public Safety Committee has talked about it for, it seems like years, it's been a topic. So appreciate where we are now. So I guess I'll leave it up to council to see the direction here. We do have the bill pinned. Councilman Hesse?
I guess I have a question, because there's a couple of points you could put in a contract. I'm kind of curious, when somebody signs up for rave as an individual user, is there something in their terms of agreement that all of us never read and just click a box to say we agree with? But do we suspect that they're making some declaration about what they do with that data and that terms of agreement? I know we're kind of just guessing.
I haven't, I haven't reviewed it, so I can't speak to it.
Is everything to enter into this agreement, everything that would be signed by the city, every contract is in the packet here, right?
Yes.
There's nothing else that's going to come from rave to clarify any further?
No.
Okay.
Any further questions or deliberation, council, or I'm sorry, chief?
Well, there's been a lot said and I, I don't know if it's productive to back up to some things, but I also failed to mention that this is a cost share with the county, 50/50, which I think is very important. And then a lot of questions have been answered. The captain mentioned, why do we not have protocols established? That was answered, I think, properly, in that we didn't want to put the cart before the horse. I also want to point out that we, if you know anything about our operation, we document everything. So if we want to go year to year and next year you want to know exactly how, in what context that system was used, why it was used, how it was used, who used it, those types of things, it'll all be there. And as I said, I think it's, I think it's a good product that we've been urged to secure for many years. And just point out, if we can't work something out here, we pretty much have to, I can think, just discount having a system, just the way it is.
Thank you, chief, for bringing up the cost share with the county. I know that was something that in the past, when these type of services were looked at, that was a specific request of council to partner with the county, so.
And I might also add, and fire chief pointed this out appropriately, I think, that in our recent search for our missing four-year-old, we were criticized for not using the Amber Alert. It didn't, it wasn't eligible for an Amber Alert. We tried to explain that time and time again to the community. Had some success, maybe not success totally, people just don't understand, but this is a system that could have been utilized with some, another mass notification to assist us in looking, because the first day, few days, we really didn't, we were, it was a search operation. And so that's another piece of anecdotal evidence of how it might be used, because the Amber Alert could not be used. Those, those protocols, those parameters established on the Missouri Highway Patrol and the circumstances didn't, didn't correspond to, to what was required to issue that type of alert. So that's just another piece of information.
Thank you. Any further deliberation? Councilman Prather?
Just a question for Mr. Mollman. How long do you think it would take for you to find out the contracting, Councilman Hensley's concerns about the contracting and sharing that information?
I'm sure I could do it in the last of a week, especially if we inform rave that this is a kind of a critical issue, that you need to have addressed before we could sign a contract. I mean, I, I would call them first thing in the morning. I'd try to, I'd try to work something out before we break for Thanksgiving. I mean, I would be shocked if this is an issue that they've addressed before. So I, I suspect that they have a ready-made answer for, for me when, if I were to contact.
I guess a follow-up would be, is there a hurry to get this through tonight for any particular reason? Can it wait till one more council meeting, just so as we can find out this information?
Consistent with the, with the previous statement that we worked for years on this, another week or a month won't make a big, we just believe in the system, but, you know, delaying it a little bit of time is not going to jeopardize anything.
The term starts, I believe, January 1st, so.
Councilman Graham?
As a sponsor of this bill, madam mayor, I am willing to put this on the informal calendar until our next meeting. But after that meeting, I will ask to be brought off the informal calendar for a vote up or vote down.
Okay. We have that placed on the informal and Mr. Mollman will move forward with contacting the company. Thank you all. 2018-67.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $941,242 and 60 cents agreement with Lamke Trenching and Excavating Incorporated for the Basin 17 Sanitary Relief Basin Project.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, as a clerk, a letter to this construction contract with Lamke Trenching and Excavating, this project would be to provide some peak overflow storage in, in our Basin 17 to prevent sewer overflows. Is this paid completely out of the sewer fund? We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-68.
An ordinance admitting section 8-13 overtime and compensatory time of the Personnel Policy Manual.
Chief Schrader?
Thank you very much. As stated, this would allow the payment of 4% of one salary, the person who is assigned to be the SWAT commander annually. It is not attached to an individual, it's just whoever is commanding the SWAT team. It added a section under, in the Personnel Policy Manual, or 8-7, which provides for those provision, provides that occur. And as I said a couple of weeks ago, there has been so much written, I have provided, and kind of set out the justification. I, I think it would take a long time to, and they're probably not ready to listen to me talk for 10 or 15 minutes about that, but I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions as to why we believe this is appropriate. This is the one exception in the city. As I said earlier, I have nine exempt employees. This is the only position where I would ever propose that this occur because of the uniqueness of the responsibilities of the SWAT commanders. So, as I indicated, I think most recently, as an example, again, more anecdotal evidence, but when we had the missing child search, the commander worked 120 hours in that two-week period, so that was obviously an extra 40 hours without compensation. Just extend that out for a year, and I just, I think it's a fair thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a substitute. Is there a motion to accept the substitute?
So moved.
All right. All in favor say aye to accept the substitute.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will take up 2018-68 as substituted. Any council questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-69.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the definition of safety-sensitive function and substance abuse professional in Section 3-3 Alcohol, Drug, and Controlled Substance Abuse Policy of the Personnel Policy Manual.
Mrs. Strope?
Thank you. This just updates some language in the drug and alcohol policy as requested by the FTA during the last triennial review.
Any questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Item 14, nothing on the informal. Done with our resolutions. We have no one sign up for presentations. Any staff or, or council discussion on staff presentations? Item 18, new business. We have the memo on 408 Lafayette. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, madam mayor. Last month, we received communication from the Missouri Department of Economic Development regarding their desire and HUD's desire to close out the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. We've been participating in that for over 10 years. The program was designed to help revitalize blighted areas. Eligible activities are removing blight through demolition and also rehabbing houses. 304 Marshall is one of those examples of a rehab. In 2009, the city purchased 408 Lafayette in the hopes of rehabbing that. They spent, the city spent about $78,000 altogether. Three years later, the floodplain maps changed. It's not an eligible expense to develop or redevelop, or use these program funds in a floodplain. Since that time, we have actually spoken with the two region division directors of HUD to see if there's any sort of relief that we could seek. We also, last year, last winter, we met with their boss out of Washington, DC. We've also gone on what is called the HUD Exchange and posted this question nationwide to HUD users and HUD staff, and really have not been able to get any sort of forgiveness or any sort of get out of jail free card on the situation we're in. So, what we have to do is, by the end of November this month, we have to give Department of Economic Development a firm timeline and plan on how we plan to expend the rest of our funds. In, in their eyes, the money that's spent on 408 is still sitting in our account and, and hasn't been used. So, what we would need to do is one of three things.
Can you go to my slide there, please?
We've thought about what the three possible solutions are. The first one is to remove the federal ties from that property altogether. And we could do that by, by taking the money out of it, accounting-wise, and put it back into our Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which we're not sure where that money will ultimately end up. It may go back to the state. It might be transferred into our entitlement program. We don't know at this time. That is what the reference is on the letter to seeking technical assistance from HUD. So, that's an unknown, because they're trying to close the program out, and they don't have all the guidance they need. If we remove the ties from 408 by, by paying the money back, basically, not from any other federal grant, the city would be free to do whatever they wanted to with that house, whether it was sell it, demo it, donate it, repurpose it, or basically do nothing with it, with it until something better comes along. But we would have to remove those federal ties and, and give that money back to the program. The second solution is, we can demo the house. The fiscal impact to that is basically a wash. We have program income, which we sought permission to use on demolishing houses in the floodplain, and this is one of them. It would remove the federal ties. It's an eligible expense under the program, is to remove blighted houses. The third option is to do nothing. That's really not a viable option, because we'd end up having to pay that money back anyway. We would jeopardize our future eligibility for some future grants, and we'd be out of compliance with the program. I'm sorry I went kind of quick on that, but in a nutshell, staff needs to know what the council's desire is, whether we report back to Economic Development, whether we're going to pay the program money back. We can develop a timeline on that. Or if we're going to demolish the, the property, and we can develop a timeline on that. They need to know what our intentions are to do by the end of this month, and we need help from the council. And we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. So ultimately, it's HUD's money that would be paying back?
It, it was HUD through the NSP, which was administered by the Department of Economic Development.
Do we have a formal agency decision about any appeal or challenge we made to how they're viewing what was correct spending at the time it was done, but only after the fact became potentially improper spending? Do we have an official decision, or is this just like one person's letter that we've gotten?
This letter's from the Economic Development, but we knew this was an issue way back in the wintertime, when HUD visited us, and we asked them about, hey, what can we do? That's why we went out on HUD Exchange. That's why we contacted both the Kansas City and St. Louis Division Office, and, and have spoken to everybody we can. And Jamie can probably go into more detail about, about the, who we've talked to and things like that.
What's the formal administrative review process now, though? Because, I mean, so far, we just have people giving opinions, but it seems ridiculous that this is how it should actually work. And before we make a decision about what to do with almost $80,000, it seems like we should actually have a formal opinion that is reviewed.
I'd have to dig into it, but my, my thought is that it would probably be seeking formal review under the Administrative Procedures Act. That, I'm not sure if the initial action would be an action in the federal district court, but I assume that that's where it would eventually end up.
Yeah. I mean, at the very least, we need a formal opinion of, I don't know if you'd call it an opinion, or a, a ruling, or a letter opinion or something, from HUD telling us that this is definitely what they determine the case to be. And then we would figure out from there, I think, what the, what the review protocol is. But so far, it just seems like we're, we're getting one-off opinions from people who happen to work there, or happen to partner with that office. But that, that seems like, like our first step, in my mind, anyway.
Councilman Prather?
Have staff spoken with anybody with the historic district to tell them where we're at? And what was their, you know, what was that conversation about?
I do not believe we contacted the historic, the, well, the historic district is a zoning...
The individuals that were...
No, it was in, this was in the council packet. I do not believe there's been any communication with them, but we, we do believe that...
Historic Preservation Office is aware of the situation? Is that...
They were copied.
Pardon me, sir?
Weren't they copied?
I, I believe so on this communication, yeah. The, the, from the historic aspects, sir, that really is not playing into the equation of this program. That is a sort of, actually, that is relatively recent.
I understand it, but the same individuals were at one time interested in possibly purchasing that home, and they might be willing to purchase that home, you know, if we give them a little bit more time. But just, that's why I checked.
Councilman Graham?
Is this the same home that we tried to sell before?
Yes.
And, and we gave an extension and extension, and I think we had one person that bid on it, but it was extremely low?
Yes, sir.
So I think we tried that, that scenario before.
We had one or two open houses where one or two people showed up because they couldn't meet the timeframe that the staff set. That's what I heard.
It was listed, I believe, for...
For a while.
60 days or 90 days. I'm sorry, I don't recall. And we did have two or three open houses, and Jamie can, can tell how many people came, but we did open it up. Some people didn't show up, and they said they would be there. But, you know, certainly part of our, our plan of action can be seek official review, try to sell. I mean, we can, as long as we can do it within the year, and we document it, and we stick with the plan. I think that's what they're looking for. They want to know what, what's our intention.
What was that offer? Do you remember, Jamie?
$15,000, and it did not meet the requirements of no stipulations.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. When it was tried the last time, was it listed with a broker?
No, sir. Our purchasing department handled the advertisement.
Was it listed on the multi-list system that brokers and real estate agents use to advertise properties?
If I can jump in, I apologize, Councilman Hensley. We were directed to utilize, because putting a property on for sale would cost nothing. And that's what we were directed as to at the time, is because it was a zero-cost function, is for the city ourselves to place it on for sale. And the board of realtors were notified of the, the sale. Lots of realtors were notified of the, the property being up for sale as well.
Councilman Hensley?
Is there anything improper about the city contracting with a broker for the sale of property, to list property for sale?
No, it's a professional service.
All right. Thank you.
So, you'd pay a typical 6% to 7% commission fee.
Thanks.
Any other council?
So, when does this decision have to be made, Sonny?
They're asking for our firm timeline on what to do by the end of this month.
So, if we do nothing, then what happens? Is something in jeopardy down the road?
I, I believe we would be out of compliance with that grant program. It would count against us in, in terms of future grant opportunities, possibly. And it would also be out of compliance with the federal floodplain regulations and our own city code floodplain regulations if, if, if we encourage the development of it, of that property, as opposed to...
And I'm, I'm not in favor of jeopardizing those funds for, for this. If we need to make a decision, we make a decision. I think.
Councilman, I saw Hensley and Fitzwater. So, Fitzwater first, then Hensley.
Is one option then tonight to ask to proceed with the appeal on the decision that was made by the Historic Preservation, not to allow demo, and to proceed with option two if that appeal was...
I believe what we did is, after the city council did not, excuse me, Historic Preservation denied the demolition that the city was seeking, we did file an appeal with the city clerk within our allotted time. We have not pulled that back and say, hey, council, we would like you to reconsider this, review our appeal of the demolition of it. I'm not sure if I answered your question on that.
I think you did. I don't know what the form of a motion would be, but I would make a motion that we proceed with option two. And obviously, we will have to get the appeal, we'd have to win on the appeal, but to at least give us a course of action.
If that's a motion, I second it.
I, I want to jump in here.
You have to help me.
Yeah, I want to jump in here. So, when you say appeal, the, I, if I'm following along, I think when you say appeal, that is addressing something than what Mr. Sanders is addressing. So, there is, so the city staff went to the Historic Preservation Commission and asked for a demolition clearance permit, which the Preservation Commission denied. And so, the, there is an appeal to that process to the city council. So, that's what Sonny was referring to. I'm afraid that when you say appeal, that's not what you're referring to. So, and that you are, that you were referring to appeal to HUD along the lines of what?
No. I was talking about clearing up this appeal process, and assuming that we win, that we proceed with option two.
I, I guess I'm confused when you say we win. You, the city council...
We asked to do it. They said no. I'm saying someone's going to have to arbitrate whether we're correct, or they uphold the recommendation. Is that accurate?
I think that's us.
Correct. This council, this is us. We'll make the final decision.
Well, then, all right, then, how, how do I word that?
How do you word it? I'm going to second it.
Yes, I'm asking for assistance. Then what's the appropriate motion to proceed with option two?
The, the motion, the motion would be to proceed with proceedings to allow demolition of 408 Lafayette. That's, that's probably the simplest way, and there's, there's procedures that go along with that. But if, if that's the direction staff has given, then, then we know what we have to do. That would involve an appeal to the city council of the HBC's denial of the demolition clearance permit.
We have a motion, and Carlos is second, and I think there's still some questions. I saw there's three hands still up.
I think we're trying to figure out the motion now, right?
I like what he said.
Do you, do we have the clear motion, Emily?
If you could repeat it, that would be helpful.
Sure. I believe what you're asking for is a motion to continue with proceedings to allow demolition of 408 Lafayette.
Okay.
Second.
So, further discussion, I'll say I saw, I think, Jonathan, and then Aaron Wiseman, and then Councilman Ward. Those three next.
Great. Thank you. This is probably because I'm pretty dense. I'm, I'm still trying to figure out why we're at risk of anything, because we don't have a final agency decision declaring anything. We're, we know that DED is closing a program, and we know that an employee at HUD has a certain opinion. But what, how does that result in us being under the gun in, in any way? I don't, I get that if we were, you know, these would be things for us to consider. I don't know how we're there yet, though. Can anyone explain that?
If I may, I'm going to try and take a shot, and then let Jamie correct my, my errors. We entered into probably a contract to get this grant, and part of that probably says what you can use the money for. We have used the money technically for the issue you're talking about in improper manner. We have reached out to the division directors, two divisions, and, and their boss in Washington, DC. We've had them here and talked to them and showed them the house. And the HUD Exchange is a very broad-based, like a listserv, and no one has said, hey, here's an idea. This happened here. So, we have reached out as many ways as we know how as staff with HUD and the Department of Economic Development. And this is where we are. We got this letter back. I'm sorry, I don't have more.
Mr. Kroll also has something to add.
I was just going to suggest that maybe the question really is, what do you want to happen with the house before you figure out what you want to happen with the money? Do you want it to be demolished or not? And I think if, if that's the process, then I think the money piece gets answered there.
Madam mayor, may I follow up to that, please? Thank you. Improper spending of money is a legal determination. You can have all the emails or formal letters that you want from an agency employee. That does not amount to an agency decision. And these are totally bizarre facts. And these are totally bizarre facts. And so until you have that agency decision, they can threaten anything they want, but they don't have anything to enforce. So, again, I'm wondering why, anyway, sorry, no, I'm not wondering, I know why we think that we're at risk of this. I'm wondering why we're not pursuing our next steps with respect to that one, that opinion of one or two people, so.
Who makes that, who, where is that appeal, then? Or where is...
I would think that you would get some sort of decision from HUD or a sub-agency at HUD. They issue those sorts of things all the time.
Which I think we've been asking HUD for the last year.
I think we have that.
But do we have that, though? Do we? Is this memo sufficient?
If I, if I may chime in, the response that we received from HUD is that ultimately the City of Jefferson is responsible for determining how those funds are to be expended. They will not provide a stance as to whether or not, what our options are. They, they keep on referring back to the fact that the city has the ability to determine how those funds are spent. It's generally after the fact that when we get monitored, they'll come in and say, yea or nay, as to whether or not we follow federal regulations, and, as, and make the determination of meeting compliance with the program.
Councilman Hensley?
I wish I could promise that this is the last thing I'll say, but I'm gonna do my best. Still, we get back to us having to decide what to do to remedy this is premise on us having been found to have done something wrong. And we have employee, not, not employees of, of this body, but we have federal employees who have reached some sort of opinion. I don't know that we have a final agency decision, and if, even if we do have a final agency decision, we should have review or appeal rights with respect to that decision. So it would be great if we could, you know, get that cleared up, I think, before proceeding down any particular road, so we actually know what the lay of the land is. Thank you.
We also had, back to Councilwoman Wiseman, and then Ward, and then Hussey. Those are the order. Okay. Councilwoman Ward?
Sorry, my comment was regarding when we were taking the motion path to demolition, so I'll ask that in case we go down that path again. But when you say that we're gonna proceed with proceedings to demolish, those proceedings would include, I just want to clarify, the whole public hearing process, correct? On an appeal through, yes, through the demolition ordinance?
I have to refer back to the demolition ordinance. That sounds right, that there is a public hearing in front of the city council, but I'd, I'd have to check back with the, with the, with the code on that.
Ryan, it, it does, it's, it's a process where we would have to place a sign in front of the, in front of the property for, I believe, fifteen days. But as Ryan said, he'll check, but it does involve a, a notification, essentially.
Okay. Then Councilman Hussey?
So I guess back to Mr. Kroll's point, decide what you want to do with the house first. I, I guess, I don't, I think that our decision on the home is being driven by the fact that we think we may owe some money back to the federal government. If we didn't, and we're free and clear, I don't think we're necessarily feeling so pressured tonight. When we took the money, and we spent the money to purchase the property and replace the roof, those were permitted uses in this grant program. And the only reason that we think they're now unpermitted is because FEMA made a change to the floodplain, and that house falls just barely within it, and it restricts what can be done with the property? Correct, right?
Correct. It restricts using federal funds for this program in a floodplain.
And so essentially, we think we owe money back. I mean, when we've talked about selling the property, we thought we could sell it, but we'd still have to return dollars back. And I guess I'm with Councilman Hensley here, thinking that when we accepted the dollars and spent them, we did so in constraints of this program. And FEMA changed the rules on this property. Not us. We didn't make a local determination that said, oh, and so ultimately, if the federal government's coming, calling, asking for their money, well, they're doing so because they changed the rules as to what they, what they think you can do with it now. I tend to think there may be an argument that we can keep our eighty thousand because we used it correctly within the program at that time, and then, and, and not feel like we have to demolish or give the money back.
If I may, if we keep the money in the house, don't do, basically, almost don't do anything, we still cannot use it for other purposes that are not intended with that program.
Okay, but did we spend the money, though? What, what, we bought the home, right?
We, we bought the home for about fifty-three, fifty-five.
And so in theory, we use those dollars to buy the home, right? Isn't that what we did? And then we use those dollars, so like, the money's spent. If we have to pay it back, it's coming out of the general fund, it's not coming out of some sort of set-aside account that's considered as federal dollars in a separate account. And so I look at it to say, like, if we don't have to pay the money back, we have a property, then where that offer of fifteen thousand dollars, we can accept? And, and take that, because we don't have to pay back eighty. Right?
It's Sonny. Because there's federal dollars in the property, federal regulations apply to it for the life of the building. And so that, that is the regulations. So if we were to sell the property, let's say, for the fifteen grand, technically, there is still federal dollars associated for, with the property. And therefore, you know, any regulation such as, you know, let's say, some, a nonprofit organization takes it and, and decides to open a halfway house, or just as an example, and they start doing renovations, they would still have to follow the federal guidelines for the abatement of lead and asbestos, and following all those guidelines. It stays with the property. And the, the lead abatement at 304 Marshall was nearly thirty grand, you know, the regulations. So I guess what we're getting at is, as long as there is a penny to the property, the federal HUD regulations applies.
In those, set aside the floodplain, we then bought a property and spent money to repair the roof with the intention of rehabilitating this property, I assume, and having all of those regulations applied to it.
Yeah.
So even back when we accepted these dollars, we went down that path, knowing we'd have those regulations attached to it. So I, I wouldn't think that now we would use the argument that there's regulations attached to it as a reason to demolish it, when we knew that, when we bought the property.
Well, and that's why we have the, return the NSP funds to, you know, the intentions were there, and...
My thought would be, you, if we don't feel like we have to return the, the funds, then a decision doesn't have to be made right now on what to do with the property. You could choose to demolish it, you could choose to sell the property with the property owner knowing that they're purchasing something that's gonna have regulations attached to it, right?
That would require staff to, to administratively follow up on the property for the life of the building. Reporting income guidelines, et cetera, for, for the regulations.
If I may, you'd have to qualify for a certain program to purchase the house.
So when we purchased the property and put a new roof on there, what was the plan?
The, the plan was to have a success, such as at 304 Marshall Street. We, we went through one house, one program, took us several years, and I think we got, you know, pennies on the dollar for the amount of money we put into it, but, but there is a, a family living there now, and that was the hope to do with 408 Lafayette, is rehab it, spend money on it, get it safe, lead-free, asbestos-free, and, and get a low-to-moderate-income family living in the house. That, that was the intent.
And if I may bring up, I mean, we're, we're talking about 304 Marshall. Yes, it took several years and several issues came about, and if I may remind, is that I had to come to council to get a supplemental for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to finish the rehab on the property. I do believe the intentions were good back in two thousand and nine, not realizing how expensive it is to rehabilitate a property in accordance to HUD guidelines. And once it became a realization of how expensive the rehab process was, in addition to the FEMA floodplain guidelines, where the lines were redrawn and putting the property into the, the floodplain, all work ceased on the property. Because it was literally, this is only my assumption, because it was my predecessor, is to not show where to go from here. And here we are, fast forward ten years later in the stimulus program, and HUD is in process of providing technical assistance to the states as to what to do with closing out this program. The intention was to provide quality livable homes, purchasing foreclosed properties within a small, narrow, almost down to a census block area to, so high foreclosure rate, putting low-income individuals into a house that is livable and hazard-free. So, I mean, these are the cards that we've been dealt with. We're trying to, to, to stay within the regulations. We've appealed to HUD on multiple occasions. We have never been provided a way to appeal, which I'm, the information that Mr. Hensley is bringing up tonight is the first time that I've ever heard of, not saying that I know it all, but this is my first knowledge of being able to, to appeal one person's opinion at HUD, when we've gotten the same answer from more than one to five individuals from HUD as to the city has to make the decision.
Mr. Kroll?
So, so the, we certainly can make an appeal to HUD and say, we disagree with your decision. We certainly can go through that process and do that formal administrative process and make that known, if that's something that council wants us to do.
Mr. Ward?
Don't know what that means, as far as a timeframe.
I'm gonna try to help out here. Essentially, I think there are three options, and just to slightly vary on what Mr. Sanders has, has presented tonight. The first thing you, you could do is demolish 408 Lafayette, and that would, that would require the property be reverted to open space, but that would essentially put the, put an end to the issue. That would be a final disposition of the issue. If the city returned the NSP funds to, to HUD, that would free up the property for any disposition by the city. So there wouldn't be any type of green space restriction. You could sell it to any buyer. It wouldn't have to necessarily be a loaded, moderate-income qualified person. You know, we could park there, we could, you know, you know, there's, there's an unlimited amount of uses that you could put on it. If the city were to get a final agency decision and win the appeal, saying that the seventy-eight thousand dollars was appropriately spent, and that the money does not need to be returned to it, then that would have a situation where we don't have to return the funds, but we would have to continue with the original intent of, of rehabilitating the property and returning that to low-to-moderate-income housing. And so my concern with that particular option is that because it is in the floodplain, we're gonna counter, we're gonna come up with that fifty percent rule. And so my concern is the math problem. In order to rehabilitate the property in a manner that's consistent with HUD guidelines, which will apply for development in the floodplain, can you do it for less than fifty percent of the value of the property? I don't know what the answer to that question is, but I would say it's probably pretty slim that you could do that. And so you have a situation where you have to rehabilitate the property in a certain way, but the city's own building codes do not allow that. And that is a place of limbo that I don't know how we get out of. So even if we win the appeal, we're still put into a fairly untenable, untenable position. Now, there's always the, there's always the option, I think, of trying to get a historical designation on the property, but like, I've, I've pointed out on this before, that is on a case-by-case basis. We would have to prove to FEMA that this property, in and of itself, by itself, is historic and has to, and should exceed the fifty percent rule. I've, I've, I've looked at the record on this, and it's, I don't think the chances of winning that and having a, a decision that FEMA would abide by would be very good. I think, I think it's more likely not. They would say that's not historic for purposes of floodplain regulations and getting out of the fifty percent rule. So that's my main concern, is that if we got an appeal and said, no, we don't have to pay back the seventy-nine thousand dollars, we still wouldn't be able to rehab the property in a way that would allow us to then return it to a low-to-moderate, moderate-income person.
Councilman Hussey?
I guess my follow-up would be option four. You win your appeal, but you seek relief from the federal regulations because of the fact that FEMA came in after the purchase of the property, after us taking action with this program, and then all of a sudden put the property in the floodplain. If we make the case that the floodplain is a hindrance to this thing being redeveloped, could we argue then that they changed the rules on this property? I mean, they loosely, federal government, I know they don't all talk to each other, but still, that, that is a barrier to this, right? Could we make the argument that we're not gonna pay back the eighty thousand, but because of these changes that have been made after this purchase of the property, after the new roof, after we started down this path, that we don't think we should be bound by these restrictions any longer?
We can, we could try to make the argument. It's, I, I mean, and I, I think, I think that has some merit, it certainly makes common sense. My concern is that this would be, we'd be, it'd be years of litigation. And, and it may be complicated enough that we might have to hire outside counsel, and we do eat up that seventy thousand dollars. There's, there's a cost benefit to it. I'd, I'd have to take a look at it and see if our office could handle it.
How big's the HUD budget?
Um...
Maybe this is just a rounding error?
Yeah. It's, uh, it's, it's certainly an interesting thought. I'd be worried about the practical ramifications of that. We can make the argument, and we might be able to make the argument, but I'm afraid that the, the answer would be a few years down the road.
Well, this is nothing that we haven't already, that they don't already know that hasn't already been, I mean, I'm sure staff is probably saying, and council, what, a year, year and a half ago, we probably, we had the same discussion. It was a tie, five to five, and I broke the tie to demolish, to get the process moving. And now here we are again. We have a motion and second to demolish. Any further, Councilman Schreiber? We have a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now, we have, how many, should I say, roll call to call the question? All in, or roll call?
This is the call for the question.
So the call to question will stop the discussion to go ahead and take up the bill. So no more questions then. So all in favor to call the question?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we'll take up bill, where were we? Oh, it's not a bill, it's a motion. Take up Fitzwater's motion. Roll call, please.
Prather?
No.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
No.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Nay.
Hussey?
Nay.
Kimna?
No.
Mahalovich? Now you have it, four or five.
Okay, so motion failed, five to four. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I suppose we could put this as a motion. I, I would move that we direct staff... I would move that we direct staff to seek some sort of, some sort of formal declaration from HUD as to their official position as to our spending of funds on this property, so that we may then determine our next steps according to the actual facts of the case.
So we have a motion and second. Got that, Emily?
Is that a motion to direct staff to get a decision from HUD?
So basically, beyond the mid-low.
Under that motion, what I would seek is a final agency decision. That's how it would be phrased to HUD.
Yes, please.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Judges?
Yes. Councilman Fitzwater?
What is the risk that we run if we do that based on the, some of the comments Mr. Sanders made as we started this discussion?
Based on the timeline.
Does that comply with the timeline that?
It's hard to say, because what state DED asked for is a plan and a timeframe. And so what we would reply to them with our plan is, our plan is to seek a final agency decision on whether or not we would be required to return these funds to HUD. And request a stay. So essentially, we may be putting ourselves in a little bit of limbo for other types of grants. We would ask that, that not be taken into consideration, and that we're trying to seek a formal resolution of this question. But I don't think that there, I'd have to take a look and see if that would be required of them in making other grant decisions. That's essentially our, our risk, is that we could risk being looked at less favorably for future grant considerations. That's what I see as the biggest risk.
And I'm afraid it's exactly what's gonna happen.
Mr. Mollman, is it appropriate that we put sort of a end, like, give you a limited amount of time? Because this is the same thing a year and a half ago that we asked HUD. Maybe not necessarily the specific appeal that you're saying, but I think all these questions, we're just starting back over again. So can we say, if we don't have an answer, which we won't, I'm gonna guess, by a certain date, that then council takes it up?
That's, I mean, that would be the council's, the council's pleasure to do that. I don't know what an appropriate timeframe would be. I mean, I, you know, I can't make HUD answer me. And so, you know, I, we could take a guess, but that's all it would be, it would be a guess, so.
Just knowing we could be at risk. We don't want to put us out there for too long, and also the staff time that's been put in it, which has been probably more than is really acceptable on a situation or project like this, when council voted a year and a half ago, actually, to demolish in the first place.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I would just say that I think it would be extraordinary of a government agency to punish or withhold funds for future projects simply because a body is seeking an official opinion and potentially official review of that agency's actions. That would seem, that would be striking and completely improper and potentially unprecedented, in my experience, anyway. But we'll see. And hopefully, they'd be able to put their opinion in writing and stand behind it.
Thank you. So we have our motion and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Nay.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
No.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
No.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Prather?
Aye.
By the eyes, motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay. Got your direction?
I'm sorry, what? Is there a question?
Do you have your direction that you need, everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Any unfinished business? And motion to adjourn?
So moved. Erin, you missed out.
All right. All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you.
Aye.